I feel free, one family. I feel free, yes, yes, yes. Yes, my lady, yes, my lady. 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 I feel free, one family. 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 Holy, holy, holy. Ndekanu is another savior. Holy, holy, holy. Holy, holy, holy. Ndekanu is another savior. Holy, holy. Holy, holy, holy. Ndekanu is another savior.
I thank all of you here gathered today. I am pleased to be in New York City. And particularly impressed with the quantity of people and city here today. And I'm humble, people that have gathered here today. Come, Rosy, come. He was in here. I can tell that he is one of us. No, you got to go by yourself. And so, as well, that's good. I believe, is that right? We must proceed without further delay. Because today, we will be discussing you. This opportunity, yeah, and it says, everything hidden will be exposed today here in New York. And I'm sure the whole world is listening, is that correct? So also, it's my deputy chair, Mafah, who will ensure that this very program goes out to the ends of this very end. Because after today, things will no longer be the same, I assure you. We must proceed, I'm sure you have a program. We will respect and appreciate our program here today. I believe that we have an MC, is that correct? Who will do the introduction of the principal servants if I may hand over the microphone to the master of ceremony today. It's a big honor, my goodness. Watching, okay, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mazi, Mazi. Our, asking you, for Mazi, for Ginevus. That is the answer. I'm sure Ginevus, I don't know where to start. I'm so happy we are all here, gathered here for this occasion. We have to follow the protocol to say the introduction of the principal servants in New York and New Jersey. What I would do is that I'll hand you over to the coordinator, the state of New York. And he will introduce the rest of the professionals. My name, because sometimes it's easy to do twice, there is nothing wrong. So, Mazi, please, introduce members of this is, let me introduce him, he is Mazi Ezimbo, he is the coordinator, the state coordinator of New York. I feel free. One family. I feel free. One family. You're welcome to New York. Our leader, it's another great opportunity to have you in our midst. I remember last time we hosted you here, on your way back, the zoo arrested you. So, this is another opportunity to have you in our midst, and we appreciate you coming. You're welcome. I feel this, I want to use this opportunity to appreciate, you know, the, how would I put it? The strong people behind you, you know, the people that made this event so big as you see it today. I am the state coordinator of New York Ezimbo, whatever is my name, but I have other guys that work with me. My deputy is here, Mazi Mbaghe, and the New Jersey, that is not up to, how many months? New Jersey is how many months?
Two months.
Two months, my name?
Oh, two months.
The New Jersey coordinator, can you guys appreciate it? New Jersey is just three months old, three months, but they have been great things. Can you say? I feel free. One family. I feel free. One family. Oh, you do, you're welcome. Yes, thank you, appreciate your coming. Um, well, I can say that Mazi Ezimbo has said, I mean, but why we are here today? And I hope we are, everyone is glad to be here to see our audience do. So, I'll hand over the microphone to Mazi Ezimbo, thank you. Oh, hey, Biafra. I want to appreciate, he's a coordinator from Boston, Massachusetts. So, we say hi to him. I feel free. One family. I feel free. One family. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for being here with us, and God bless you. If you're glad to hear, can you, there's no more. All right. I'll start my lines. I'm sorry, Pastor Thomas, can you please come and say hi to our people? And also, Mazi Lu, please. This is Saginaw coordinator, Pastor Thomas Kratos. Oh, hey, Biafra. Oh, hey, Biafra. Oh, hey, Biafra. We welcome all of you in the name of Yahweheshua. You say? I feel free. One family. I feel free. One family.
I'm really glad to be alive and to be here today. Because I think it's a great day, if not for you, for me. Because when I got into this movement, our leader was in the presence. So, I imagine, how can I see him? And seeing him today, I think we shall live longer.
Amen. Thank you for coming. Bronze coordinator, Mazi Upwe, if you're not here, your deputy come, go along here, follow here, come. Mazi Obina, where's Upwe? Then Upwe, Obina, you come here and say hi to our people. That's the bronze deputy coordinator. Can you put your hands together for me? One family. I feel free. One family. One family. I feel free. We are really happy. Um, may God continue to bless you, and the God we have protect you. Um, this is I feel free bronze chapter. Our bronze, my name is Obina Belitain, I'm from Oga. In our local government area, Onka province, Biafra land.
Rudo?
Oh, hey, Biafra. Oh, hey, Biafra. You give the microphone back to the eye, because, can you guys forgive me? Because it's not that I forget my other coordinators, I just introduce the states, forgetting those that are working with me. They will. Say that confirmed what I was saying. I feel free. One family. May we remain standing, please, we must lead to prayer. But standing here in front of me is an ordained of God. I would defer to him, I would ask him to pray beside me, please, you come forward. To poor Kiké Biaman. The God of Biafra, the God of Israel, the God of Abraham, our great grandfather, the God of Jacob. Your children have gathered from the east, from the west, from the north, south, from this country. They have come to hear your servant whom you have anointed and given to us. This is our Lord's doing, this marvelous in our eyes. We never had a freedom fighting like this. And that's why many not understand, they call him names, they have gone to kill him today by your super sonny power. You preserved him for us. So that the enemies in our lands shall be destroyed. In the name of Yeshua Hamashiach. You say? They have gathered all these Islamic uncaring, unsincereous face, fates, to fill our lives, to pollute it. The rape, the women, they do all kinds of havoc to your own children. And I know from heaven right now, you are hearing us, and you are watching us from the dead heaven. And I know you have never, and you will never let us down. You have never sent anyone a disappointed person. And we are glad and privileged to have your servant, the prophet of Biafra, Mazi Ndekanu, who humbled himself to take the call to go and serve the whole of the children of Israel that live in Biafra land. In this way, we commit everything we are going to do today. We want you to be the first and the last, we want you to be the leader. We know their hearts are on this man. And we know you will never fail him. We never fail anyone. And not a failure, not a failure, we are going to win this war. All our enemy shall be confounded, they shall be destroyed, in the name of Yeshua Hamashiach. We ask you, Lord, to reign, lift your wisdom, your knowledge, be a doubt on your servants as in minister. Speak through him, minister to your people. Your people are stubborn, they don't listen, they don't hear us. The Lord, as he ministers today, take control of his town, his house, ever before, and his whole person can speak to us. Our women are listening, our children are gathering together, Lord, they are waiting for you. We know you are going to fight this battle for us, so that the enemies we know, for the first, for the last time, they will never try Biafra again. They will never try the children of Israel. They will know that you have a covenant, that no other person has, and you are about to prove it. You have done it in Biafra three places, three times or more, when the son that represents Israel appeared on Biafra land. Father, the way of Wanda get Israel, you put it on this time, you speak to us. The act of the government of Israel is written on his shoulders. I gave him over to you for super sonny protection, in the name of Yeshua Hamashiach. You say? You read and have the glory. I commit everything we are going to do here, any enemy who disguises himself or has shamed, and is here, confound them, in the name of Yeshua Hamashiach. Then we go back, then when they care, for shame them. Father, thank you for hearing us, in the name of Yeshua Hamashiach, Jesus, the Lord, the God. You say? Start, oh, that's not. We shall defend our law, we shall perish, we shall protect us from all our fools. What we have, what we say, for all we obey. They let us die without a shred of fear. All hail Biafra. 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 You may all be seated. All right. If you want to take a picture, they told you before, sit on your seat, you can do it from there, focus on there. We have official photographer here, if you don't get enough, and they don't think should, you know. And make sure that you get us many, just as well. We all want to take pictures too, me too. Everybody wants to learn. All right, next in the program is says, presentation of corn nuts to our leader. The deputy, ah, watching. You know, sorry, we have to speak in our own dialect, one of the dialects. Biafra language is the Igbo language. Igbo English language, and then, probably, it makes it look like we are separate, but we are separate people, so I'm being friendly. And this thing that they bring in there, they call it corn nuts. He doesn't speak English, doesn't speak American English, speaks Igbo language, that's the only thing he understands. Oh, Jana, so begin. Uh, so, Mazi, I never talk to you. I'm going, I'm going to go, I'm going to go. Oh, okay, all right, let's see. Um, I am, I'm going to pay Elsa, they are. Pay Elsa, I don't know, I just. I'm going to pay Elsa, okay, I'm going to number, oh, yeah. Okay. Uh, I'm going to go, so, I'm going to go, so, I'm going to see you. All right. Oh, well, you must, you must stay. Oh, okay, you know, you, yeah, I'm going to go, I am going to go. All right. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to go, I'm going to go. Idoma, do we have any person from Idoma? I go, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Okay. Ah, I'm going to, okay, okay, I'm going to. Because, I'm going to, I'm going to see my, yeah. Yes, 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 I'm, 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 I'm. So, I'm going to please. Oh, okay. Oh, well, a member of War People Congress now. Uh? Oh, well, anybody from War People Congress that is present with us, I can give you a color. I have a little cousin. He is a Yehudah. He was a village. He was a cha-cha. He was a Georgia. He went to America. He came from Uchiya. I said, "Kesha, give it to me." He had a day, eh, ba. I said, "Oh, my, yeah, I told you." It's seven years ago. My mother, she was a young woman. So, my wife, I'm a woman. I have a lot of children. I have a lot of children. Okay. I said, "Oh, my, yeah, come on, yeah, come on." Uh, yeah. My wife, Jonathan. My wife, Jonathan, come on, yeah, come here. I said, "Yeah, but I did what I did." Jonathan, you're the head. This is the best. This is what I thought the head. I didn't do anything. So, yeah, I told her, "Oh, my, yeah, yes." Oh, my wife. Um. Aqua Ibo. Did I come before you? No, I'm a Ibo already. I, 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 I'm already me. Aqua Ibo. Cross River. Oran. Uketh. Abia. Okay. Abia State. Eh, Nuku State. I think we're good enough. Oh, my, yeah, there, ta, ne, ba. Oh, okay. Okay. What I love, yeah, oh, yeah, there. Oh, yeah, Abba. Abi, be, Abba. Eh, Nuku. Oh, my, yeah, Nuku, deva. Okay. Alright. Uh, oh, my, yeah. I said, yeah, oh, yeah, Z, yeah, beggar. Oh, yeah, Z, yeah, Z. Alright. Ma, obuta, ma, si, na, yeah, oh, yeah, Ruby. Oh, Gola, Nyosi. Oh, Gola, Nyogi. They're gonna need a day for Gola, Nyogi. I was saying, yeah, oh, nah. Oh, yeah, not too much. I have a microphone. Ay. Oh, hey, Be'afra. Oh, yeah, my darling, oh, you great. I said, yeah, it's about, eh, where Gola, Gola, eh, off, eh. All hail Be'afra.
All hail Be'afra.
All hail Be'afra.
All hail Be'afra.
Ibo, mama, na.
Yeah.
Ibo.
Yeah.
Ibo, Zona.
Yeah.
Ibo, Pakasea, na.
Yeah.
Udon, Iran.
Yeah.
Ma, si. Na, the car, no.
He said.
Usumwaka, Hesu. Usumwaka, Hesu.
He said.
He heard John, eh, and he heard, eh, John, eh, and I seen, eh, Niu.
He said.
Oh, my, eh, Bungu. Yeah, the brother, eh, eh.
He said.
Oh, my, eh, Bungu. Yeah, the brother, eh, eh.
He said.
Oh, my, Be'afra. Oh, na, eh, you, eh, no, eh, oh.
He said.
Yeah, the, eh, eh, nama. The, eh, eh, nama. The, eh, eh, nama. The, eh, 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 eh. Oh, na. He, Be'afu, eh. I, na, told you. Na, Ha'ne'gafra. Okay. The, eh, 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 nama.
He said.
Nje, Nja, eh, he, eh, eh. Ah, the, eh, 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 eh. He, oh, ma. I, na, you, eh, eh. He, eh, 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 eh. He, eh, 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 eh. We, eh, 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 eh. Oh, yes, eh. I, eh, 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 eh.
He said.
I, eh, 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 eh. So, na, eh, eh. I, eh, 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 eh. Never, eh, 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 eh.
He said.
He, eh, 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 eh. Okay. Eh, 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 eh. I, eh, 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 eh. Njeru, ma, eh, eh, eh. Eh, 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 eh. Afwa. Mko. Yeah, the, eh, 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 eh. Ah, ha. Chukwabia, eh, 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 eh.
He said.
Alright. We're in recognition of Be'afra groups. The vets. Alright. Thank you. The banner was running up. Okay. Let me add something. Our elders. Veterans. They, they, those who did what I did in these some days. The veterans. Will you please say like yourself, no? If, eh, 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 just, you don't understand what they're resisting. Oh, okay. I said, I said something. I said the way I did. I was a vet too. I was in the war. Oh, in the war, I said. Yes. I enjoyed it differently. But today, I'm still fighting the war anyway. But this time, not with the physical gun, but the microphone. Trying to do what I can do. Because our leader taught us a new way of doing the same thing that we did before. And very effective, of course. In those days, we wanted to fight. I don't know why most of us gave up. I know how many friends that I lost through the war. And today, we are still doing the same thing. They have not left us alone. Nothing has changed. Some people were saying that we went to that war. Eh, we took good deeds. We took good deeds that, my dear, you had no choice. If you went there, you would fight. Then I enjoyed it. I was quite young. Gave me opportunity to live home. At least my parents wouldn't tell me what to do. I remember when I, when I first came to my father to tell my father I was going to join the army. I just said, "Father," I told him, "I wanted to be in the army." He didn't say anything. He just walked away. And my mother said, "In the respite, you're not a natural, eh, eh." My father didn't even respond. He got to going. I'm a si, you know, you should not wear a piece of natural, eh, eh. Oh, yeah, eh, 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 eh. Oh, yeah, eh, 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 eh. So, it was fun. Today, we are doing the same thing. I'll be happy. I'll be happy. In example, talk of or not. See what's going on. I don't know. I'm not concerned. Certainly, nobody will know it. But I heard you was calling you on the phone. You're talking to them. Always, you know, eh, 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 eh. You wouldn't even know where they are. You will not be a happy person. No matter what you eat in this place, you will not feel good. So, veterans, you are all welcome. We thank you. And all our elders also, we are welcome. You must give ourselves a hand of applause. Alright. What else we have on agenda now? It says inauguration of the IPOB Women Week. Why, that Bridgette? My woman. Are you here? Could you please come forward and take a mic? Go on and speak to your women.
IPOB.
World Family.
IPOB.
World Family.
IPOB.
World Family.
First of all, I thank God for good life. My husband is here. He brought me here today. And I thank God for everything that has happened in my life. I'm also my son. I'd like to help them here. Mine is Bridgette. Um, the way we start, my husband, my brother, my brother. My marriage to Tony, to Catherine. And he's from Hungary. I'm from Almaty. From Hungary. And both myself and my family is not a strength of us. Because we are blessed by Almighty God so much that we have decided to use most of our income to help people at home. My husband has educated two doctors whom we don't even know. We have a doctor in the before. Only that we saved the the father died on a road traffic accident by a car. And they are serving the family. So, when my husband said, "Oh," he started train one. And the second one ran to the school. I was going to say he wants to go to school too. And he started to train them. I'm so sorry. I can't tell them how many because most of them are heritage from him. So that he doesn't know. And we said, "Ah, like," trying to see what we can do. But no matter what we do, none of them is stable. We still go back to keep on helping, keep on helping. It's not, it's not the only thing. When I heard of what about our leader, even before I heard about him, I was praying and I said, "The only person that will save the problem in our land is God Almighty." Then eventually I heard about him and what he was saying. And I said, "He is my man." Eventually, I had that five, nine, eight, nine, twelve. Then from that, about all this news that we are asking because that was where I was brought up. I took rest. I did not know what to do. I was confused. Until the day I was told, my girlfriend forwarded it to my phone about his appearance in Israel. That day, my heart was revived. And I have never stopped here and listening to IPOB, the radio Be'afra since then. I, I did not know. I did not plan that I would am the person that will become called to speak about this today. But I know how much I feel about what was going on. So, when we went to Atlanta for the 30th event, I was spotted by our leader. So, our leader. Whatever you did for me that day and prayed for me, I wanted to do the same thing to my fellow women. Because after your prayer, my life was completely changed. When I came back on the 6th of June, because when I was in this position, I said, "I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do." Then it was Father Augustine that we met at Atlanta. Here he is. He called me and said, "You know, we will start, go and let our leader pray for you." And after he put that prayer, that was a change. And ever since then, when I came back, I haven't stopped calling Father Augustine. Each time I will call him on the phone and I say to him, "Here is what I want to do, what you want us to do." And he has been so supportive and helpful and together with other priests that are contacted. So, I that whatever you did for me is also in all women here. So that, please, I would like you to do. He was done. Now, I can do that. But he will do something. Please, come and have a stand. And come, please.
We are about to coronation, all love, love. Our nation, Be'afra love. Life is a hope and peace and joy. Our nation, Be'afra love. No matter what you have or where you are. Our nation, Be'afra love. Everybody, let's come together. Our nation, Be'afra love. Nobody is to be rejected. Nobody is to be neglected. Nobody is to be depressed. All in Be'afra love. The sun to be just and tender. So, I'm rejected, you know, once. It's our coronation, love. We are about to coronation, all love, love. Our nation, Be'afra love. Life is a hope and peace and joy. Our nation, Be'afra love. No matter what you have or where you are. Our nation, Be'afra love. Everybody, let's come together. Our nation, Be'afra love. We are supposed to have peace. No more oppression. Nobody will argue. The future and riches. No more games. Nobody takes. Just love. And dignity.
So, please, can I talk nice? Some of women here. So, when I came back, I couldn't wait to start. One of my friends said to me, "Oh, you have to wait until they introduce you." I said, "I'm going to start with what I know." What I know is that I want to increase the number of women we have. So, based on that, I had to start making calls. In New York here, I have Ijama Owakwe. Is she here?
She's not here, yes.
Okay. Ijama Owakwe has been very, very supportive and very, very hardworking. And from the report that she gave me, she has found fifteen new members. And we give Oh, are you? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. This is one of the new members. And I have two people in New Jersey, I have one person in Los Angeles, and I have one person in Chicago. So I tried to get representatives from all these states that Oneye Do was going, so that anybody that they were able to talk to that herself stays um, family, so that you can be effective in the family. So I am encouraging all of you to be part of this family because God will bless you. You never know what you are missing if you are not part of the family. So forget all about all the scandals that have been laid against I P O B, they are not true. And any of them that is wrong is just wrong. So. We want to say that is that your right to call and all of you know what you are doing. So I just, please do not leave I need in the name of everybody, please. Okay, thank you.
I P O B. One Family. Our mothers are here today. And I want to say to Jukotika Biyama, for his guidance and his mercy upon our mothers who are here today, a representation of the fighting spirit that we are born with. Because everything that we possess in terms of our determination, our consistency, our quest for justice, we receive from our mothers. Our moral compass we got from our fathers. The same way that our mothers rose up in nineteen twenty-nine, the same way they rose up in nineteen forty-seven is how they have risen up today in this very land of America. Therefore, we ask the Yehovah Him to bless and to sustain them, to bring the same nurturing spirit, the same guidance, the same love and affection that they have for us, their children, to see I P O B as their child and for them to nurture it accordingly. We pray for your mercy to be upon them. Because I said it before we started, that only two things are missing in this restoration effort. The involvement of our women and also those who live in the United States of America. Here today in New York, both of those things are happening, which is a very strong indication that the Africa is indeed very, very close. I charge Yehovah Him because we know how we pray. We know our hearts because nothing is hidden before thee. To infuse your spirit of togetherness and sisterhood into this very pillar of I P O B that we are nurturing today here in New York. That you may bless their garden's people. That you may give them wisdom and understanding. That you may give them strength and fortitude to pilot their efforts of this very long conversation until our is restored and beyond. In the name of Jukotika Biyama, we will. Alright, alright, our mothers, they have done it so well and I trust that anything they get involved in is time to go, they are time to move, they are to be moved. Alright, next on the program, we have our Reverend Father Augustine. Could you please come here, come on here, sir, and discuss a few minutes and tell us a few things, three words of encouragement? Alright, yeah. Father, yeah, brother.
Father, yeah, brother.
I P O B.
One Family.
I P O B.
One Family.
Dear most welcome. My name is Reverend Father Augustine of the Naga. Father of the Naga is from the Denver Province, Roma Mbala. Yeah, brother. Um. Oneye Do, I hope you don't mind, let me speak to our people. What issue? Um, I was making series of calls just for this occasion, in New Jersey and New York. And I got series of questions. Each time I would refer the person to come here and ask how Oneye Do for the answer. But one came to me that I do not refer to him. And this one was, one of my good friends asked me, Father, why are you an I P O B? Very serious. And I was like, why do you ask? Because as far as I know, I P O B means independent people of Africa.
Indigenous.
My apologies. Indigenous people of Africa. And I said, you are a single person, independent people of Africa, not if I live in a mat.
Yes.
So the independent of Nigeria.
Yes, absolutely.
So, the guy, Wesley, that's the one I know. Wesley, yes, the end of January ago, because you, you know that I P O B was prescribed. I said, hmm, now you are talking. And he said so many things. So at the end, I said, I hope you don't mind if I ask you one or two questions. He said, no problem. Said, very good. Number one, I know your first name, I know your last name, do you have a middle name? He said, yes, a very chimer, actually, he said he has two. One from the father, one from the grandmother. And I said, very good. And he loved the names given to you by your parents. He said, yes, me too, I know. I said, now your parents are not over there. And the number one enemy of your family comes and tells to you. Forget about the Beret, forget about. I want to give you a new name. That henceforth, your name will be Amekreja. I said, would you answer it? This is your number one enemy, who doesn't want you to leave. And is now he changing the name given to you by your parents and calling you Amekreja, would you answer it? He said, no, said, very good. Why would my enemy, the full Aministerial Government, tell me that I am a terrorist and I will accept it? Why should I do it? If you accept it and give it to you by your enemy, then you have given your enemy the world authority to control you. And I told him that when your enemy says you are a terrorist, you should turn around and tell him, he is a devil's secret. Give him a more serious name. That's how, that's how you counter such as the idiotic uh, 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 semantics. It's a better side from it. I said, do you know why I P O B was prescribed by the federal government? That he doesn't know. I said, okay, well, you are discussing now. I P O B was prescribed, that's for attention. Not because of these young guys who are protesting on the streets of their homeland. I P, I P O B was prescribed precisely to get the prominent people of Africa. As simple as A B C, because that is a system of Flanis. What D S S will just knock at your door. Sir, this is an ID from D S S. What did I do? When we get to the office, you will tell you. And then you get to the office, they tell you you are sponsoring a terrorist organization. And they can fabricate anything, and before you know it, they do a well with you, you are gone. And they will do like that until they pick all the prominent people in their homeland, then they have succeeded. It's not because of the young people on the streets. I told him, look, I study social justice and peace at Florida University here in New York, up to PhD level. So I perfectly understand the signs and symptoms of genocide. I perfectly understand the signs and symptoms of ethnic cleansing. I perfectly understand the signs and symptoms of religious cleansing. I know that these guys are making a terrible move to finish us. Then I told him, you are here in US, you are very successful. You might think, okay, when they are beating the prominent people in, 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 in Africa land, you may feel, I'm fine, I'm comfortable here. I see what happens. If when they finish with the prominent people in there in Africa land, and they change the name of Nigeria to Federal Islamic Sovereignate of Nigeria. And they change the name and change their passport. And then when you go to change your new, get a new passport, they tell you, if you don't answer a Muslim name, you are not getting a passport. I said, what do you do, going abroad? So you don't go, go. You don't go, go. We need to understand the signs and symptoms of these things when they are coming. But our parents will tell us. The Flanis have given us all the signs and symptoms of where they are coming from, where they are, and where they are going. And we have refused that they have that. Despite the fact that a God sent man, Mazinam DeGano, who saw this long time ago, when the symptoms were coming. He was hammered. What? And many of us felt that we are insulated from the problem because we are thousands and thousands of miles away from home and to care less. I told the guy, hey, another reason why I joined I P O B is this. When the three most important institutions in my life are under threat, I have no option for to fight like there's no tomorrow. My family is under threat, dead life. My community, which is Africa land, is under threat. They have to give me identity. Our people say. My didn't dread, my family, my community gave me identity. And then as an idol, I have committed my life to serve the church, even the church is under threat. I say, why would you, why, how comfortable would I be, I be sitting back? The three most important institutions in my life, my family, my community, my church, are under threat of extinction. And you expect me to sit back and be saying the rosary alone? You must be, I didn't tell him this, but I said, it is difficult for me to accept. But this is time for me to fight, if not for anything, to defend these institutions. And finally, I told him, why I joined I P O B with that? After the fight on that in two thousand and seventeen, we all came to New York to march. And I counted seventeen priests who came that day. Three of my friends drove from Doroto, Canada. They came for that marching, and after that they went back the same day. They just came for the march. And after the fight on that, I told this my friend, I was getting depressed. I was hearing of depression I never experienced it until that time. Because I was like, this is an area I studied. And look at what is happening to my people, what can we do? What can I do? I had no idea what to do. I called up my friend, they found, yes, sir. I said, tell, get me, connect me to World League Congress, I want to know what they are doing. Because this cannot continue like this. Through, uh, Ken, uh, Dr. Ken Higben, we were able to reach out to World League Congress, the executives, to have a meeting, it was difficult. My friend was willing to pay for the executives, but they live all over the place, to come so that we have a meeting and figure out what to do. It wasn't possible. And I was asking around, what can be done? Until I met a friend of mine who introduced me to Mazinam DeGano's speeches. After listening to him, my mind started to come in. I was already. I was already gone. And then, eventually, through my friend, Simion Egan Young, I got where I do be in New York. I told him, I am going to New York to register, I will be coming from New Jersey to New York. And then after we did this a couple of months, we said, you know what? We are going to have our own New Jersey I P O B. My dear brothers and sisters, sister, let me tell you this. You have to. You have to. Nobody deceives me for ourselves.
Yes.
If you are aware of what is happening back to back home now, you must be out of your mind.
Yes.
Let me tell you this. Since I joined I P O B, my mind relaxed. Why? Because, you know, there is nothing as bad as, you go to the hospital, they run all the tests, nobody knows what they are suffering from. Nobody knows how to help you, you are helpless and hopeless. But once you get somebody who thanks you. But once you get somebody who thanks you, there will be a way out. What happens? Healing starts from that moment. I started getting my spiritual, moral, and physical healing the moment I joined IPOB. Because I started getting the sense, I started getting the sense that there the hope is not lost. That there is always a safe line at the end of the tunnel. And so, my dear brothers and sisters, I'm not advising you to join IPOB. I am comfortable that I love it. I don't know about you. But guess what? If you are gathering all the junks that are in the social media, from Facebook, from Instagram, all this is, the whole thing is pounding on your head. The more you gather all these things, the more you get confused. So when you get to IPOB, IPOB will begin to sort things out. Give you the clarity of how, where we are going, the hope that is there, and the hope that is not there. It is helping me, and since then, I have been a happy man. And nobody, I repeat, nobody can stand on my way in doing whatever it takes to be a member of IPOB.
Yes, that was good. That was very, very good. That was wonderful. That's the way. Most of us are way.
As our Reverend Father.
So I was unfortunate that we, I wouldn't say we joined the IPOB early enough, no. At first, my same brother was always bothering me, listen to some, I said, I've heard all that from Ozwiki, I don't want to bother, said, brother, please, please, I know you just listen. And I started listening, you know, it's like I thought I did it. Every day I will listen, every day I will listen, but I never thought about joining IPOB. I was only listening to Marzina. I had a free listening. Until one day, I didn't hear his voice, and I asked my brother, what happened? The Marzina DeGano is not talking today. He said, no, sometimes he allows you to before to do the talk. I said, okay. And I kept listening, then who to overannounce? Now our leader has been arrested. He said, who? Arrested? Yeah, the DSS arrested him in Nigeria. I called my brother and said, I want to join IPOB. Because this is the time. Now if they are arrested, it means somebody's listening to you. It's not just blah, blah, blah. It's angry, and it's talking. Yes, he asked to speak to us, talk to us about Council of Ed and Veterans. Yes, it's given time to speak before we hand the microphone over to the leader. Do the talking for us. I know a lot of us are waiting. We are ready to ask questions. Write it down, because when you get here, you will forget. All right.
IPOB. IPOB. One family. And I can't imagine it. Still, you're glad. Um, I say, on your behalf of the veterans, the Royal Veterans, and them who are on the ground. I should make it clear. When they are providing support. And on behalf of the speakers of veterans, IPOB, the neighborhood, because somebody got banned in Nigeria. Neighbor representing here. And the sisters and you. I should make it clear. Come on. Police chief. They could use it. We did wait, but why now somehow like overruled? We did it again. Oh, because we intend with the. Now we should walk. Oh, what people, two, two, two. But all of this in our, our country. Who will? Oh, no, that one, my body, she, you, you, because of them, they are losing their lives. The IPOB, oh, you, I know. Because. Oh, you are. Come on. You could like it or not. In India. I'm a Galaman as Nigeria, I'm watching as my. Be a friend. Because, I, I share you. The share became, pardon me, IPOB. It will be now. Pro be a friends, pro, and be a friend groups, we are all saying the same thing. And I am going to go back and we know about. Yeah, well, Marzina DeGano. Because, oh, you are, we will hold you and perform and do your duties. So on behalf of the be a friend, veterans, now I speak at the be a friend. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, my brother. There you are. Thank you very much. All right, we'll see you later on. This time I have to call the New Jersey. For what you have to New Jersey, please, you want to look again, five minutes, come and speak on behalf of your people before we continue. The same presentation that they wish to do, so, what would you?
IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
One family.
IPOB.
Um, as Reverend Father said before, that we all was, you know, doing a meeting with New York. And we keep on asking New York, what's going on in New Jersey? They consider that they don't know what. Because we. We said, okay. Yeah, we find a way on New Jersey, because we are from there. So along that. And Marzina, I would be tired of the set of a family, a family in New Jersey. Um, along line, I couldn't believe it, that people in New Jersey, they were eager, you know, looking for IPOB family. So, um, as time goes on, we began to pass our information concerning IPOB to few people. I couldn't believe it, that the people stopped calling us, where are you people? We are doing a meeting, what's going on, what is time, this and that. So this is how IPOB. New Jersey, and they are working day and night to make sure that they meet up the IPOB demands. They keep on saying that when they say what they are planning and what their movement, that the United States IPOB will know that something new from New Jersey. Right now, um, some of them were saying, why not we need to come to New Jersey? We said, don't worry, we have to take permit from Oyendu. Okay, so maybe we are late, but I hope, it's not the people that forced running. They may not be what to be. So. So we started to say, of course, right now, but I believe and tell you, we are doing, we are doing great. Oyendu, sir. Um, on behalf of the family, IPOB, New Jersey, we have a symbol that I want to present to you. Uh, we want to show it as appreciation for you to come into visit us here in the United States of America. And we are glad, because your coming here is close for us. Yes. All IPOB. And every, every IPOB. Have to stand up. You have to stand up. If you know that coming from New Jersey, please stand up. Oyendu, sir. We, the family of New Jersey IPOB, we, we are giving this symbol. Your great job and great work for Yafra. We said, make a cheap. Be a man. Bless. And people, and bless your family. He said. IPOB. When I was coming here, I had the impression that I was coming to. Only open New York. But I came here with my spirit and my soul, and I will talk to the church. And the same day, and this very spirit moved around some of you in New Jersey. So do I pray that it will move across the fifty states here in the United States of America. Only two things are holding on. I think we've solved the first one. Our mothers are now coming out. The next one is that this gospel of redemption must permeate every society, every community where our people are domiciled in this great country. Because to cook the cabia, I will give us be a friend. Then to those of you in USA, we will just read. Please just. Yeah, thank you. All right, all right, New Jersey, New Jersey. Yes, what a motivation. It's very good. I'm very impressed. I'm very, very impressed. Okay, this time, our leader is here. We have to, I know many of us here are so eager to hear what you say something. Just me too, of us also. Radio here, I'm recording everything, so tomorrow maybe I'm slow played. Uh, you know, recording program from Radio Yafra, USA Two. We are here hosting our leader today. So, uh, right now, after presenting the microphone to our leader for the gospel of the day, Marzina.
Thank you very much. Thank you. IPOB. 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 One family. One family. One family. There were. Please sit down. Before I proceed, as it is customary within IPOB, when you work for IPOB, you are working for heaven itself. They live very near, I can't see. Because we are here doing the will of Allah. The will of God. It creates. That is why we sit in that overnight party. That is why we said this four years before they happen. That is why. I want you to hear. Is Africa here somewhere?
Yes.
Please come, come to me here. Come, come to me. Come to me. And our dear brother, Uncle, is he here? Jack, where are you? Great woman. Great woman. I, this is one of us touched by the spirit. And I'm humbled to actually be in her presence today. As a person on the lady. You must commend her for what she is doing, because she is one of us. And in IPOB, there are be a friends. In IPOB, there are detectors. But when we say that somebody is one of us, it means that they are focused. It means they are resolute. It means that their spirit is indestructible. It means they are. Who position, who has to help the other mothers. That is why I come here for you. May God bless you. May God be, may God bless you. May God bless you. Thank you very much. Thank you. As we continue to wait, I want to acknowledge Jack of course. And then you must proceed to preach this very gospel as I have demanded in story. I am here to cure many diseases.
Oh, I'm a D K.
All your need, never have any money. I am no fool. This week. Your heart that you then. You know things are. Where American father will come out to say that still we suffer some days. Normally, I wouldn't start this way. I will preach. And I will go to start from the part to begin to lay a very critical foundation as to all the unfounded allegations and innuendo against this very big family. The greatest of its kind anywhere on the face of the earth. We are the largest. Only IPOB. Somebody had something. I am sure some of you invited some people. And they gave you the excuse to fear and cover up the situation. That what they want to do, what they are coming to do is to allow their prejudice to overcome them. Because what you have accomplished, what IPOB New York has done, what IPOB New Jersey has done, what IPOB USA is doing, is something that they themselves have never do, not today, not tomorrow, whatever. And because of that, because they cannot do it. And because of that, because they cannot do it, they have to look for a way to try to destroy the others from joining, to try and destroy it. But they cannot, because this is a divine project. Before I came here, I asked our sister, Nen Naya Anya, I am still on the Defense Fund. Defense Fund, I'm still on it. Oh, I'm Adike. How many of you here are paid Defense Fund? I want to tell you, please. How many people here are paid Defense Fund? This is the end of this year. I have this I asked Nen Anya before I came here, I don't know if you heard my speech. But I have to today, because it is an exception. And it was sent to me. In the whole world, fifty countries out of the eighty-eight where we are domiciled responded. And in total, the amount we contributed to us, our Defense Fund is one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and six euros and forty-seven pence. What do you call pence in Europe? Is it cents? It is here. From our computer, it said one hundred and only. This is not the amounts we use to chase away full amays from America. Those billions and billions have been lying to you about to destroy you from yourself. They say, and how much did you say there? Tell me here, you know, how much did you say paid towards our Defense Fund? Two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight. But the greatest gossipers are in America. The greatest peddlers of lies and deceit that are here. Here in America. The same way they lied to my brother Scott Berry. Lied to him about me. Somebody who was in prison. You know, when you lie and lie against somebody who is in prison for your sake, God will never forgive you. All that Defense Fund who lap for here, those that did not pay for Defense Fund that do something about it. Today, you have compelled me to tell full amay that you have no money. Now they know. You can now say it. Two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight, all of USA, any of that, but Sarah Defense. And you know the funniest thing? With the exception of give me that one again. I have no secret, if you know me. I tell you the truth always. That is why I'm alive. Chukwutika Biyama said, if you speak the truth always, I will preserve you. That is why I read the longest Psalm in the Bible, Psalm 119, every night. I have been reading it consistently for five years without fail. As long as you remain truthful, there is no plan from the enemy that will prevail against you. I have come to New York, I went to Atlanta. I went to Los Angeles. I drove home to Houston. I went to Chicago. In between, I went to Toronto, Canada, and I'm in New York. Why don't you ask yourselves, where are those gossipers? Where are they? They have come up with a new one. The new one is that IPOB was prescribed. Or that we are a terrorist group. As our Reverend said, somebody told him that we are prescribed. And they say these people are educated, that in America they enlightened. And yet, some people cannot listen properly. They full amay that declared IPOB a terrorist group. Why haven't they declared funny, it's a terrorist group? Do you know that people have said it's a terrorist group? Do you know? That IPOB was designated a terrorist group because they know that some of you are cowards. You think they're not visiting? Prison is the one advising them. Prison knows that a majority of our people in America are cowards. Once you share them, they can be a terrorist, they will always watch you. Because they'll be afraid. If the family home, they'll be scared. Who told you that? But everybody else will be asking you trouble, because of the IPOB. Who told you that? Because they know that you are fearful. We say that Eurobats are cowards, that we are the greater cowards. We hide behind every reason, not to someone in the government like this. Every reason in the world we manufacture. Coco, see a bad dog, you know me. Every institution we found is small. Now they are terrorists. But they full amays that are killing you every blessed day. As the Reverend said, the churches are not an attack. Some of you go to churches? Don't you? You go to different churches, man, get the Eurobat. One for Biafra, eh, come to a church, be Eurobat. Shame on you. Anybody that goes to a Eurobat church should be ashamed of himself or herself. I didn't say shouldn't marry their mom, oh, by whom the river. I said they are church, and they know why. Do you know why you shouldn't go to their churches? Because they are all Muslim Muslims, all of them. I said all of them. Do you think of them? Every known Eurobat preacher was born Muslim. But they use their media preponderance, their excessive representation within Nigerian media space to convince you. The same way they convinced you now that talking about rape is more important than talking about and following and becoming your next group. They play your brains. They make you think that Biafra is only possible in Eurobat churches. And then you go there. And what do you come with? You know, you know, what the next of you will do? Is everything okay? Because we are Biafrans and we always will behave. Is there anybody here who doesn't know? Is there anybody here who does not know that full amays are in our villages? And who we expect to fight them? Who regards who hurts from America? Can you fight them from New Jersey? Can you fight them from New York? Can you fight them from Chicago? Who are the people on the ground fighting for our lives today in Biafra land? Anybody that gossips to you from today on was asked them one simple question. Why were you not at the time permitted to ask this ridiculous question now? Some people don't appreciate the level of sacrifice that needs to go into any freedom fighting movement before liberty can be assured. Some of you are in America, but you don't know American history. This land you are seeing today flowing with milk and honey. People fought for it. And do you know why Elohim said to Moshe, that is Moses, very well? I have given you this land for free, but you must fight for it. Do you know why? So that the children of God will not be people of superstition. Because if you go into the land for free, anytime you ask for something else, you pick the cup of free. Isn't it? That is the basis for superstition. The which has no place in the life of a true believer. I do not believe in superstition. I believe in reality, that thing that we can do for ourselves. And I say it with every degree of authority. As I say everywhere that I go to, that without IPOB, without IPOB, full of the world, that would that you, there is something you can do about it. You know, America, it's a handwork. And our land will be gone. And who do you think will save you? Or who does our nation save you? That one, will you save you? People say, oh, the intelligent Zibos are very intelligent. Our Biafrans are very intelligent people. Two fundamental mistakes we have done at the time. That is why I was telling us. If you know you cannot do what IPOB is doing, if you know you cannot do what Namdekan is doing, say by this side, I appreciate it. Some people help in the morning, they see how well IPOB is doing. In the evening, they come on association. They do this time, they tell you, oh, come, let's unite. Let's unite with who? What have you done for? Who the man, who the man, you are going with? And you come to New York and coffee, and all this, and hopefully why don't you come and join us? Why must you be outside? See me for relevance. I see most of them are, uh, Kellmey, Ashor, Ratty, because, fuck I don't know what they call it. Because inside us, we harbor the deadly seeds of jealousy and envy. And it is very, very destructive. That is why Igbo men, on our nation, they are so and sit down there and allow IPOB, that is not any weapon to be those I do, you have a fine accent, I can't hear us. And now they are sharing with us, we don't have life, they say. Do you understand what I'm saying? You know, my name is Fulani, I'm a good man. Are you aware that full amays are killing people? Are you aware that Christians are dying and they are being killed? Are you aware that Jews are dying and being killed? Are you aware of it? Have you heard of anywhere that IPOB went to some economy to kill the people there? But Igbo men, Igbo men, Igbo. I personally despair for IPOB to you know what I said this year, I go to their mama. It's true. Because we will not forgive them. And I'm saying, if you don't cry for them, start crying from today. We will not forgive them. They will pay very dearly for their betrayal of our people. Everything I have told you has come to pass. Every, you know that Chukwutika Biyama is mad at us? I am telling you the truth. If God doesn't love IPOB and what we are doing, how come everything we say in exact precision, happens exactly like that? I joined Nigerian Bar Association, now I'm in jail. I said to them, I have been given two unconditional releases from the court. And the UPO refused to put pressure on the government using your good offices to compel them to release me from prison. That one day, this government will come after you. Go and ask them. A mapar for sign the press statement that was, it was published, go and Google it. Everything I tell you, you can Google it, I said it is true or false. And I said to Amoyen, if you fail to compel the courts to prevail under the general of the Federation to order my release, given two outstanding court judgments, that you will suffer for it. Ask him, and he was removed. I said, just disgraceful government, disgraceful. The same thing I told Ogorocha and his friends. That shame shall befall them. And you know how they play their politics in the zoo? He contested for Senate, isn't it? And he rid himself in two hours, they normally do. And they will tell the certificate. And they raised this top for him, doing it like this. Did you want it? He will say, yes, yes, I want it. Preset to him, go and announce Igbo president in twenty twenty-three, we give it to you. And he took it gladly and agreed. That you have been released to pay for what you have done. And there was a second day, you said. The fact is, when Nigeria raise your hand up, you have this. Do you know what they said today in the zoo? Do you know the bracing arrogance of Fulani cattle headers? The worst is that if we go to school, they are migrants into the zoo, God, Nigeria. They are not equally impigious to the place. And they have gone across the length and breadth of northern part of the zoo. They have opened their borders for their fellow full amays to come from Mali to kill you in your towns and in your villages. That your land may be taken over. Don't be fooling, I'm saying, go and ask the Togodis president, he said it yesterday. Togodis president said it yesterday. And this morning, Fulan people said openly, no Christian can ever become the president of Nigeria. Offering this open. Is it Vanga, is it Vanga or Posh today? And some of you say you are Nigerians, oh, we will support IPOB. That America will not save you. Because you will have no way to go to. And let me tell you something about white people and how they reason. Once they know you have no way to go to, you are in sinners' world. Do you know that? Jews, we are killed in Europe, even during the Spanish Inquisition, right up to the very. Yeah, we are killed in us. They found that Europeans had no way to go to. Something shall befall you. And to make matters worse, I've been playing over this and saying to Chukotika Biam, do you want to destroy us? Because people going through what we are going through today and have consistently refused to reason. There must be, that's destruction, isn't it? You are an endangered species. I am telling you the truth. No amount of offer and you dance outside can save you. No amount of village meeting you hold outside can save you. No amount of awarding abroad can save you. The only way you can sustain your relevance is by making sure that the land you come from is free and great and free. Some people think that Yoruba will fight, is that right?
For where? For where?
Will Yoruba fight?
For where?
Your local?
For where? For where?
And do you know why they will not fight? Their business is too full. And let me tell you the truth today. Everybody in that devil's situation called Nigeria. When they talk about one Nigeria, keeping Nigeria one is for a reason. They know that without their friends, this thing that Fulanis are doing is like picnic. They will stop all of them. All of them will go. So we are their insurance. We are their insurance in that zoo called Nigeria. Us. Yoruba will not want Nigeria to divide. Because in Biafran goes, Fulani will come and live in Lagos and take, I'm talking about the army of Lagos now.
Yes, yes.
Yes, now. That's army of Lagos. Can they talk? Because half of Yoruba is Muslim, understand this very well. And as every Muslim knows, your allegiance is to Saudi Arabia. And Iran. And if you are in the zoo. And you are from Yoruba land, and you are a Muslim, your primary allegiance lies with the South African society. Do you know that the South African is the head of the nonsense in the zoo? Do you know that? Do you know that Yoruba man can go and hold your man's ass on Friday in the house?
Yeah, 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 it's true.
No, no Yoruba man walking through a mosque in the north of the zoo. And conduct a. Impossible. They are confident remaining as slaves to the Fulani. Because of their fear of Igbo man. Maybe because we are blessed. I said to the people that the Jews of Europe went through the same thing. God in his infinite mercy will keep on blessing Biafrans. You know, Chukotika Biam can be angry with us as much as he likes. But because his war is here and end, what he has given you a blessing, he have to. Are you following me? Once you are under the special anointing of heaven as we Biafrans are. It can never be taken back, that which have owed you to suffer until we discover who we are. And remedy some of the nonsense that the creation of Nigeria has brought us into. Who created Nigeria? Who created the zoo? Is Lukar from Allo? Is Lukar from Samba? Is Lukar from Odomo Shu? Now, can you tell me the reason why Africans are defending something that they did not do? When they call you a slave, you shouldn't blame them, they are right. Oh, my, I can never balance, somebody would have free, but I won't say it because kids are here. It's for adults only. Can you tell me the reason why you allowed people to come from Europe into your land to tell you the name to answer? Can you expect that to be pleased? Is India developed? Is India developed? Is Japan developed? Is Singapore developed? Is Malaysia developed? How about, um, Commonwealth Philippines, developed? Do you know one thing they have in common? They are proud of their heritage. They are proud of who they are. Because some people see us the way we are. We do a keeper and a tallit, and they say they are taking us to Israel. That we are not Jews. And what I'm saying to you today was exactly what I said to the students of Tel Aviv in Beijing when I gave a lecture there. Last year, November, if I'm not mistaken. And I said to them that the only place on this earth. The only place in the whole world. That lends credence to the assertion that the Jews were in Egypt is only in Biafran. I repeat, the only place in our world, we have the reason, verifiable proof and evidence. That Biafrans, or should I say that Jews were in Egypt is only in Biafran. And they ask you why? I said, because, except one pyramid you have in Egypt, you have in Eloug State. Some of you don't know what a pyramid is. The Maya Pyramid? In Egypt?
Pyramid of Giza.
Do you know the level of scientific knowledge that has to go into construction of one pyramid? Except measurements that accompany this pyramid. Those things are where you come from. It is not in Israel. They talk to you, they don't want to talk to you, they lie to you, they think you don't know. As the white man told you, or asked you to believe. Our temple was there to worship one through God in heaven. That's why it's called Aluchubu. Chikpebuli, bro, where Aluchubu? There are other instances, is that correct? Where Chubu? Is that wrong? Chikpekasa Chili, is that correct? So you think you did it out of your own sheer strength? Because God is with you. Wherever you go, is that what they says in the scriptures? And who cares, is that correct? But let us not turn our blessing into stupidity. That is why you must rise up to support IPOB. That is why you must do everything within your powers to ensure that Biafra comes. Because without Biafra, you are nothing. The same way it happened to the Jews of Europe, so shall it be with you if you don't do something now to arrest this very ugly situation. Because the Fulanis have come. Do you think Kamasi will defend you? Therefore, Mari, will he defend you? Will Okasi Passi defend you? Will Okambo defend you? Who can defend you? Who can defend you? Who can defend you? The only reason why they came to kill me was because Igbo men were behind it. Without the support of all these men, they would have died. Do you think the people that died don't have mothers and fathers and sisters and brothers like yourselves or children? They are not all young people. There were old people amongst those that fell. That is why we will not forgive, not forget. There will be retribution. If you represent the interest of all these corrupt criminals, tell them what I said in New York, that there will be. There are elders here. How many of you have asked the governors why they sent people to come and kill us? How many of you here? Only one person in there. Do you ask this, why is he coming to us? Those are. Father, I've told you, you cannot produce business. They did not find you fit to occupy any specific position in the zoo. They have come to land as well by force. And all the money that fuels the economy of Dr. Muzo Lógico Republic comes from Biafran land. What else are you looking for to convince you that you're not in Nigeria? Is there anything special you're looking for? Or are you waiting for people to confirm that's vice president? What are you waiting for? I have a feeling and a suspicion. That some of you in America wants our race to distinct. I'm telling you the truth. My feeling tells me that some of you here in America, you hate yourself so much that you want the rest of Biafra to be obliterated from the rest of Biafra. Do you think they'll find a government? Do you think they'll come one day? It can run, and some happens again, they have stopped coming, do you think so? What are we going to do to stop them? What are we going to do to stop them? Are we going to fight them? Are we going to fight them? Are we going to fight them? Are you prepared to do all it takes? Are you prepared to do all it takes? There are two things you have to do. And the one I have given you a very long date, uh, calendar. Have you secured, have you secured appointment for 3rd of July to march in Washington? Have we secured it? Have we, have we applied? Is there any reason why all of you cannot come to Washington? July 1, 2020? Any reason? Oh, my, that I don't know about. Is anybody here who saw a point? And there are people here who are unemployed, no work on in America. So we can take two days off, yes?
Oh, they are.
Start from today. Because if the whole world is listening to this, everybody else, I mean, I'm sorry. The whole world is listening. And we're coming from all over the world to America. The rights to enjoy today in America can be distilled down to only one episode in the history of this country. That very march on Capitol Hill led by the very gallant and late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. That is very happy, that was single march. And with our own single march, which we know will surpass that very march. Not only will Biafra be free, but the whole of Africa will be free as well. I don't know what Washington will look like that very day. But I know that there are some of you that will write to US government and ask them to not allow us to come by the 3rd of July.
No joke.
Before I get here, some of you are receiving WhatsApp messages and emails, is that correct? Since I've come, are you still receiving those messages? We are prepared to do everything, humanly possible, let up Biafra. We have sacrificed in the past, we shall continue to sacrifice until Biafra is restored. And we are not rich. Everything I am wearing here, including these glasses, was given to me by IPB family members. The reason why I say this, I want to say, I have needs only, I don't. I have no need for a car. I have no need for a bicycle. I have no need for a mansion. Because the greatest mansion in service and concern is the dependence of Biafra. Because the greatest mansion in service and concern is the dependence of Biafra. I have no services. I have no services. I have only one, but I can't do that, C S B. Every day I am among Biafra. Every day I keep running Biafra. If God does not wipe me out with my family, I know he is not gone. I say, I love to God in heaven. Biafra. Biafra, Mama Rafa, Biafa. Mama was a Javili. Biafra, Mama was a Javili. Biafra, Garendo. Nandikado, Isamaa, Señor. Oli, oli, oli. Nandikado, Isamaa, Señor. Is that where you go, I told you more? Thank you. And having said that, I can't go to organize in New York and New Jersey USA I P O B. This is great for me. I am a listener. The man that's on the other side, is he there? Is he there somewhere? There is guys, what we have been telling them. Year after year, after year, after year. That is the reason to walk, that is the reason to walk. Nobody goes to listen. They said I'm made for trouble. That I want to start a war. I've got this sort of hate speech. A war against hate speech.
Hate speech.
But you see, but you are not very clear. They call it hate speech. When for is it is a
Yeah.
Do you want to remain in Nigeria? I imagine the people here in New York City, do you want to remain in Nigeria? Because what I'm letting you all understand is that what we can do is and I have. Because some of you love lies. I'm not moving, I say, I say. I'm saying it very well. Oh, my, 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 my. I hate lies and myths. If I come to you, I will say, I do it for you. That every other substantive meeting that I may have with those that matter, that can move on God's word, I will not give anything. For every picture that you stay and do that is more than not. Anybody who brings lies and deception into personal aggression, lies will follow you all the days of your life. Nobody have a covenant to check on. Nobody from anywhere else here, apart from us in I P O B. With my kids, very, now in there for answering that we are under oath. If you're not under oath, I cannot talk with you. Do you understand me? If you are not under oath, I will not talk with you. I am not being very clear. Because you will sell us for 52 years, not also. They have been selling us every blessed day till now. Oh, you have a way to go, you know, man. And you want me to walk with you? Ah? That is this question I ask for the time. How many Ibo associations are successful with the war? Can you apply yourself? How many Ibo groups are successful in Nigeria? How many? Oh, but oh, do their families, we're giving a message. Is that not correct? Can you just animal person, wait, you don't like to do it? Don't be shy, get closer.
Graduation.
Somebody said, we are finally giving our journey I P O B. Because you don't know what we lost. I said, do you know you're talking about I P O B? They said yes to me. And I said to them, continue the thing. But you worry yourself about this with your entire time contained on something we come. Can that have you ever been marched on the road? Back road? When we march, the mountains vibrate. Oh, but no, again, it's also I then did ask you. When those people march towards the north, I give you 14 days, and zoo will not exist. Some of you in America know how this attitude, I preach this, I make slavery pretty possible. And slavery was a reality in the land of men is because of slavery. This is something some of you are portraying. And that is why I have preached it before. That it appears that when the whites say that they are superior, that they are correct. Do you, who have been preaching to them, they are when white people say they are superior to blacks, I believe them, that they are. Do you know why? They don't receive the way we do. They don't. When this country they play fight Britain or not. Do you know that those that fought Britain were British people? That came here to live a life of equal peace and equality amongst men? They fought. We are even asking you to fight. We are not even asking you we are asking you for something that wants us to everything. Some of us want to have the, what person? Am I, if you go, can fight? Some of you think that one day you hurt them and you go home and your village will still be there. Who told you that ever in the world? They are in they need to, now, listen to me carefully. They need to round up very, very quickly, they have three and a half years to complete. After that, they will hand over to us. By that time, families and your villages, they will say, oh, why are you complaining? The people be, your brother is the vice president now, so why are you complaining? Even you. The day it happens, soon, go back and pull your gun at New York. What I'm telling you is what is going to happen before it happens. Are you going to allow your village to take over from you? Will you allow it? Who are those that fought? 60, 70, 70, or maybe you joined later. Oh, baby, just raise your hand up, don't stand up, just raise your hand up. Do you know that you are likely to
Yes.
How am I because of the war, the fight is why you are alive. I will tell you their plan. Do you see what is happening in the world now? I stopped entire cities, have you seen it? That was their plan. To kill African on the open, to deter your then they have proved they have to become those men. Some of them are farmers, forced and forced and forced and forced until Goon accepted the terms of no victory or ambush. You must understand this. So why do you see a person? They are your savior that you're seeing that same moment. And I thought that the greatest army the world has ever seen. Because if you can fight Britain, Russia, Egypt, O A U, and they look wrong attitude, or should I say collaboration, conspiratorial, I used to add, of USA, then you deserve every accolade that you get. I assure you. Nobody was able to do what we have done for three whole years to fight against the whole war and prejudice. Suddenly, those things that our parents fought and died for, some of you are carrying today. Why do you think we did not receive any help during the war? Bulgaria told Chief Justice Peter Wooten, it is his face, that one Japan is enough. They don't want another one. Who here knows the late Justice Peter Wooten of the Supreme Court? He was our special envoy to the communist countries in mid to far east of Europe. He went to look for help. Do you know what that thing taught me? The way the day he told medicine after in London, I asked him, which of course he conquered later, that some of the hatred you see against Biafra is not because of anything we may have done. They are afraid of what we, what they know that we are likely to become. Because in Biafra, we are to stand. We will build a hill of clay. Who will build many cars? Who will build skyscrapers? There is nothing a white man is who that we cannot do. Therefore, some people don't want this something to rise from our favor. But perhaps some of you are content with living the life of semi-slaves in America. But we are not. Do we know we are semi-slaves here? That you are here, a semi-sleeve. They tell you to come, say some problem here for 200 years of free labor. And after that, you will tell yourself to continue where they left off. Vision, control and disgrace. That is why in I P O B, we have power, we have it. That is why we know that our war can only be measured not only by the resolution of Biafra, but how well we hope on to there anybody tell me about the foreigners on the do you know your population? Do you know your population? And they are harassing us. Instead of us joining us together and rebellion and fight them, we engage in pickering and fighting like people who cannot visit very well. All the the families here, west from Europe, I can understand it. They are the lords of the law, they drive cattle. They sleep with their cattle. They drink the urine of their cattle. And they are your lords and your masters. And you allow such nonsense to continue. You condone such idiocy. And then you rise up and tell me, I live in America, I'm very proud. It's a good thing people dance, the fact is someone because when I preach, there is hardly any good news in it. Then the good news I'm giving you today is that Biafra must come. Biafra must come. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Biafra must come. You have another assignment apart from Washington 2020. You are going to pay for what we're going to do at home. We want you to fund this dying movement. I want America to fund I P O B. Can you do that? Accounting of every anyone here is so good, I mean, I count. Today, I've told you how much you have contributed in your defense fund, and I'm sure that case is now buried completely. You're going to pay $1 every month. Yes. No, 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 $1 every and that $1 is tax, you don't have to, is that correct? So in actual fact, we will use the legal means of getting Uncle Sam to fund Biafra restoration. Those outside come, the angry, there are too many people outside. And when you make it such a place, I cannot take off, I can't stay here. The many people are upset, they are upset. They don't, and most of our people, the people that they understand it, and they're trying to help me, they are so upset, rubbing my understanding and they are trying to help me, they are so upset, rubbing my eyes. I P O B! I P O B! I P O B! No, I believe! Now you see, one of them, the house right. They came, some of them must have come late. And the way that the dog is blessed tonight. The dogs who are, I will say, they will be happy. The way the dog is blessed tonight is how the dog, Biafran will be blessed, you have read about it. But they should come now, this is what I I love you, I'm waiting for you. You can pleasure please. I will, when they say we are, they say we have, they say we are capacitive. And the commander at the other and they have played it. And don't call the police. This man can, I can never more than five service, I will because if they call them now and when they miss, we say that the police will We only have one thing to do. I am asking each and every one of you here to donate one one dollar tax deductible. In all the wars, you'll not pay for it, Uncle Sam, please to help restore Biafran. And not once you're not doing it. The fact that any poor guy, he will just two people are coming to run down our special administration. I would like a man to the nation of the holy north side. Maybe we need to announce the nation, so the Because if we announce the nation, the nation now, everyone will they won't understand. We are wrong for many and Biafran will respond. I said before that anybody who doesn't believe in Biafran will not go to heaven.
Oh, come on, man.
Your mommy, the youngster, they complaining. They were asking me, do you have the keys to heaven? And I showed them, yes, I do. That that heaven is Biafran. Because I'm a long proud on his side. I see this in heaven. So shall we do this for him? So if there is heaven somewhere in heaven, there will, and there is also heaven here on this very earth. And that heaven is Biafran. Do we have any doubt?
No.
Do we have any doubt?
No.
July, November twenty twenty. Are you coming with us? Are you coming with us? Oh, we know it's an improvement, I can hear, I can hear. From, which you said from next month, every Biafran adult in the USA must set up a direct debit of who not ever
Yes.
To contribute to tax double one one dollar every month. Don't forget me. And then you watch this, okay? If you have more than that, you can also be maybe not in my town, I can hear again. So far, has I P O B done well defending you back home? Has I P O B done well defending you back home? Then you have no reason, no excuse, no support. Biafran, I say to all of you here, I can tell you that what we are fighting for is not just self destruction. What we are fighting for is our freedom. We are fighting for the right to live as free men and free women in the land of our ancestors. The dead world, our ancestors on the part of that very land for over five thousand years, so shall we occupy it for another five thousand years. I don't know the safety of my brain because some of you have some questions which I that you could have been as I tell you, because I did not. By the same two people that came here, man, that gave us B S S that evil men destroyed. The same two people that gave us a life on this very will not only hear our prayers, but will give us Biafran in our lifetime. Oh, yes, my Biafran, yeah, yeah.
Yes!
Oh, no, no, Biafran, see, Nigeria, I can't, man. No, I don't understand, I'm just sorry, I mean.
Yes! Keep calling.
We are going to march in this but the world may know who we are. That the world may know we live in this country. That humanity may bear testimony to the fact that a people from Africa came here and decided to stake a claim for their freedom in the land of the free. And that any obstacle be that man-made, must be true. Standing the world Biafran ground very empty to reform. We have no need for Nigerians because we have Biafran's and one day, Nigeria will be, will be better for never come after you. That was sent you here gathered. May the spirit of the Almighty, greater of the heavens and the earth, people with their blooming energy pray in you, upon you, preserve and keep you that you may all be alive to witness I P O B! I P O B! I P O B! Alright, um, now, I said it before. Um, when we came in here, I asked somebody to give out numbers. Yeah, okay, I asked somebody to give us some numbers. And I have to, uh, bring you guys here. People, uh, listen to this. This is supposed to be question and answer time. And then uh, one day I don't know, sixty five cent. Listen, I think talking alright. You are late, you are late. And the dog, I'm talking with him. And he might know where they are. I don't know, they're soon, we don't feel bad for saying they give inside. I saw somebody, somebody came to me today and asked me a question. He said, are you like people that you used to sing in the band? I said, yes. Say, ha, okay. And they, and they say, sir, I mean, no, that time, see? But we are here. Yes, we So let me, let me start by, uh, calling out and people that have a number that want to speak or ask questions. What we have Alright, so, please, if you want to ask a question, you have to make it very, very brief. No praises, nothing, just come here, ask your question. If it is the one who's going to answer immediately, he will. But if it's the one that requires you to, because a lot of people are going to come and ask, he said, they go back over. So, uh, those that were given numbers, I don't know, do you have somebody who has the number one that wants to ask a question? What's your number? Number one? Alright, come in. Straight to the question, no talking, cause two minutes.
Oh, hey, Biafran.
Oh, hey, Biafran.
Oh, hey, Biafran.
Oh, hey, Biafran.
Director, I want to welcome you to me. Welcome. The God of heaven who sent you to us. Shout. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Archbishop of I P O B United States. And we pray before we do anything. Because thank all of you who came. I hope you come and join us in the meeting. Lucky come and take picture with the director. Good morning. My question, sir.
Beautiful.
Is it possible that you have in a certain way where those of us are not coordinators who you play they want to share?
Okay. Alright, another thing is, let me be very clear this time. We want question because like as I'm here now, I've had some, I'm a member of I P O B, so it's very, very uh, very unselfish of us to try to bring I P O B members to ask questions. We want strangers, people who are not members of I P O B that need to ask questions. Okay, let me, I can see a hand up there. Are you, you are are you a member of I P O B? That you don't need to ask questions. We want those who are members of I P O B to ask questions. Alright, I am not being, uh, because there's nothing, uh, we, as I P O B members, will ask that we've not really heard before or know. You want, you want to ask questions, go ahead, man. Well, the number, they will not say, I am not, I'm not jumping numbers. What we have said, if you are a member of I P O B already and you have a number, you're not going to ask any question. We want those who are not members to ask questions.
If the, what should our people do if the deadly men are ordered to start slaughtering people and people at home? How can we defend ourselves right now?
Alright. Okay. I P O B! Our sister asked us a question, what are we going to do if the foreigner headsman or we are there to start killing us? It's not us to do what we've been doing. We've been fighting back. We've been driving them away. They are with us or without your support, they will overwhelm us. That is why we need to support everybody here, not just here, but across the world, US. Thank you very much. I, uh, this is not my level, who has the next number? That is not meant for I P O B. You are, okay. Number seven.
Because we shy because of poor human ah, what would you they can look at Jamaleh or Queridenimo. Uh, because can both I have killed in Cuba or we are gonna, I have big sacrifice, give my eyes. I don't know, who who is not Israel. Israel, not a target. And we don't think Israel, Israel and they don't know, can I, I don't know, they close to you. Who look at, look Russia or China. Israel, they are hey, we're in there. Biafran, I'm not for analog. We're Biafran. I saw you go after, we didn't see America, we we I got good man. I got Russia. I'm not Russia. Russia, they are they are my mid fighters. Oh, no, we're although we need because America and Britain all can be, you know.
Alright, I don't have any question. First, I think all I do, I will leave you this right before I go to the Thank you. Um, your question is in order. But you also answered it as well. Because where are we to start advertising every step that we take? Our earnings will take exactly those same steps to counter it. So, but I can assure you that you are the ones holding us. I'm telling you this, you people in the USA are the ones holding us, putting us back anyway. Come to Washington, July 12th, twenty twenty, and then ask me four weeks from then. But I can assure you, there will be no need for any further questions. Come to Washington and then Thank you. Alright. Uh, I'm not going to break the group at all for one time because somebody here said is, they came out of state and they want what's they are not I P O B, they are not I P O B. Because I don't know what we at I P O B want to ask to tell us. We've been listening to him. We are, we are, we are fed up. So those who are coming from the outside who are members uh, I need to give them priority. Alright, my brother. Uh, okay, we'll get to you later, I mean, let somebody go. Real quick.
Do you understand? The fact you don't do something doesn't mean that...
Oh, how many guys? Oh, how many guys?
This is a very good one because during the war, during the war, the last African war, there was a soccer...
Oh, true.
...conceal on the fence, on the civil defence. You cannot see outside the barrier to know what is happening on the inside. For you to know what is on the inside, come to the inside. And then on water, the water will know you. Alright, let me see our sister here. After you have gone calling, uh, the American wine to come and sit your...
I P O B. I'm a big girl. I'm going this two thousand and fourteen. I live in Ziladale. I think my husband, my husband, they ask me, they ask me this question. We... The city of Brudan... We want to set up a highway. Because we want to see what people doing. So, I'm here with one. My, we, uh, my husband, me and my husband are coming here today to, for you to tell us what we do so we can open a chapter in Ziladale. Thank you.
I P O B. Uh, she was coming along and she dragged her husband as well. It's a good thing. And this also goes to their brother who happens to be the vice president of Ibo Group in New York. Thank you very much anyway. And my guest is a thank you. Everybody here. Can't say I P O B. You don't need a social information over there. We are the one you are. So, I P O B. Because I P O B is the best company in the world. As an I P O B family member, if you travel to Russia, people will receive you. What is here, where you sit is here. Do you understand? That is something people don't quite appreciate about us. When you come inside, you marvel. Then from outside, it seems that nothing is happening, but a lot is happening inside. Thank you. Alright, let me see. Okay, come on. Thank you very briefly.
I P O B. I P O B. All the people. It might impress you to, to know that I'm the Reverend Father. And I'm not afraid or ashamed to say it. Because on the day we met in Nigeria, in respect of our fallen heroes, I wrote something in the social media and many people, because the Reverend Father in Nigeria started asking me, "Father, are you a member of I P O B? Are you supporting them?" I say, "The blood of Biafra is running in my veins." Uh... And where Piafre is you, nah, I'm bad Biafra in Nigeria. So, you have the applause also, man. Come there. Why they show come back, man? Why I'm Biafra?
But most of you, okay? Alright, uh, one more attention. Uh, only issue wine, but you're bringing about their women before, before you have a society. Uh, because I enjoy that wine, you know, in very much a knowledge. So, let's keep up the momentum.
I P O B.
One family.
Because, uh, I'm like a leader. I'm not one that I'm losing my mind. I won't now wonder. And I am very happy that online, to be with you right now.
Yes.
And that's new way of going. Because that is one of our function immediately after this, uh, meeting. Now, this is the last time of the year after I go online, then I can go to some friends. So, just to let you know, four months is one of our main for you. So, and I'm happy that now some of you, you're going to do. During that time, I agree, I gave you the account number, only again, I'll put on one and everything. But please, please, I don't want to go and joke, but I P O B. This is what they do, comes from the belief right now, that's why they just support the movement. I get any power again, I hope I give this to my name and I. And so, only I would argue that you, you know, you can give your money, I want you to check the letter, the I P O B U S D. Okay? Thank you.
I agree, I agree, man. Yes, okay, yeah, particular. Alright, let me, okay, um... I P O B. I P O B. Um... Yeah, man, I want one dollar, I believe. Thank God, man. By the time... Yeah, my mama, you take down those. Yes, I am taking it, yes, sir. Yeah, my wine, I talk about them, man. Come on, they only hear that, too, man. I need you to see, I can't hear that, man, you okay? Yes, no, I'm... I need to be real, so you... Yes, I'm a brother. I need you and this, um... I put everything there, man. Put the pen up, you there. And this, you know, man, I prefer that. I want them to look this, you know, better. I want them to feel it, feel it. Oh, I want them to feel it, man. That one, I like those, I can't. One dollar, I want, I need to... How we even gonna be here, ask my hand, I mean? Oh, when they will hard call I P O B.
Yes, sir.
No, no, they hard hustle of the movement.
Yes, sir.
They go to the country every month.
Sixty, sixty.
Sixty, is it? You know, sixty dollars every month are those that own I P O B. Call them the hardcore. The conscience of this movement. Call them twelve midnight, you wake them up, they ask me about I P O B. I'm very special. No one dollar, or the electric. Oh, by the dollar, I can't see, I can't see. Alright. Question, question, question. We don't want any more speeches here, please.
I P O B. Um, my name is now the most... Master, I'm so happy to be here and so delighted. I have two important questions. Although I am not a registered member of I P O B, but right from Nigeria, I have always longed to belong and Biafra is my heart. I have a lot of friends who are finding it so difficult to believe in this movement and many of them are youths. Now, my question is... And, uh, in every condition like this, the youths are always the people that it happens. Because we have the energy, we have the strength, we have the brain and whatever it takes to make it happen. I don't really know if there is a youth wing, a system youth wing of I P O B. If there is one, I would like to know them because I want to identify myself with them. If there is none, then it is very important that we create the youth wing of I P O B. Because this is... There are two questions, there's one question I have is this. Because, uh, sometimes there's a little confusion when it comes to the different Biafra issues. I have friends from Abu, I have... I have friends from Calabar, I have from... Who are not evil. But sometimes there's a little confusion. They talk about Biafra, we talk about evil. In other times, whenever you're on a case, I follow you on Facebook and everywhere, sometimes I just stay at my workplace. I go through YouTube, I listen to your speeches and motivate me, I... You talk about Biafra being uninclusive to all the whole eastern region, which is actually the truth. But sometimes, when we come to a place like this, I've heard people say, um, when they contribute money, we have evil people who need help, who need that and other. So, we have to try to control the language in order to make everybody feel among. Unless you want to come out and say specifically, Biafra is for evils, then we know. So, let that confusion be cleared, channelled.
Alright, thank you very much. I P O B. I P O B. The question he asked, I'm very present on our website, guys. We have I P O B youth wing here in USA.
Yep, yep.
Of which team, what's Jimma's son, Jimma of Chicago? Uh, Jimma was the sister contestant for the mayor of Chicago. What's the son of again? Anya? Anya? Anya, E N Y A N. So, Jimma, is that correct? Jimma Anya is the overall youth leader here in the USA and you work with him. So, we have I P O B youth wing. Nowhere else in the world within the USA that we have I P O B youth wing here. So, you can send your children, even when I'm so, if I'm a banana, but I'm, but this American accent. Send that there to go and propagate this and help us bring back Biafra. And regarding our people, all of us, in former... Uh, this is... We are all one. The fans that may talk abroad, they look to Japan, they can't see the nation, they can't... Nice Japanese language. It's all, it's... Also, there's one that are quite wrong, because they say evil. Cross river contains evil, speak, they speak evil. Do you know that? River state evil. They must say evil. If you in there, uh, be evil and put that myself, they speak evil. Bring the devil evil as well. Do you know, if I tell you that you love my example, will you believe me? You believe me? Then, yeah, the Kegori, I have a gun, and I... Do you know that? They tell you, I know we are, we are from the north, I have the... So, in England, there is Britain and there is England. The same thing with evil and Biafra. Even English may be a bit, you know, preponderant. It gives them the entire British English. The same way that evil is to come out of it, because both are very... It is widely spoken more than any other language. If you go to Abu, you have the I P O, you have Anna, you have Orang. Different, different everywhere. Do you understand? If you go to cross river, I take care of four or six languages as well. If you go to a... If you have free, for a meter, then they like this. And understand that if somebody from a certain state is evil, they struggle to understand. The same thing for parts of... If I speak proper, you beg to die next minute, understand why? So, that's the way it is. I don't want people to come, to become the same thing, you know, angry. Because, because you should see, it's not for the people, it's not for me, it's not for your language. It's only for everyone on the planet. Like you know, simply. So, when we tell the people, sometimes we are not understanding anybody. The last Biafra head of state is who? Please answer from where? From where? From where? Last head of state of Biafra. Was I a woman? Does that answer the question? Thank you. Yes. Alright. Question, question, question. Alright, guys, come to the lobby. Let's make it very brief, very brief.
I P O B.
One family.
I P O B.
One family.
Um, my name is Chief Amos Majibu. I come from Obispo. This is in Obispo. And I live in Boston, Massachusetts. I have one question and then I have an appeal. The question is, what do you do to add a program on the culture we are knowing? But I have noticed that on one or so occasions, we have forgiven people, probably I P O B members, who aired in one way or the other. We say, "Let's forgive them." And then apparently they come back in... Are you aware that forgiving people who have aired can enable people, if we keep doing that, it can... Enable people who did serious things to come back and even cause greater havoc? Have you never thought about that? That is one. Then, yes, the other thing I'm talking about that's an appeal is our national anthem. I happen to have been singing Biafra national anthem from the former Biafra war. And I know that the way, the anthem that is played every day on the radio is not quite in order, it's not being well sung. It's about seventy percent correct, but that isn't very wrong. Um, appears I called the radio, the one... And Dr. Harvey, who said, who said, and leadership. So, are you... And please, correct, uh, Biafra, one, one, uh, ready by this scene, move on. The, uh, some of the chance, uh, church, we need to place that. That's correct, which...
The one we play today is the...
The one that we made is a powerful song, a powerful voice, very good, but the rhythms is not correct. Thank you.
Alright, I think I can do that. The, the, the one you're talking about is, the one, we're not using anymore. What, what we're going today, land of the rising sun, we love, cherish, that was something. That's the correct one. Okay, okay, but I know, I know that there are two types and, uh, we didn't know to be... Alright, uh, another, another person, let's see, somebody here.
Hi, Zaba.
Uh, what's the next number? What's your number? Oh, they went on. There are some I P O B.
One family.
I am not in the habit of forgiving anybody that betrays Biafra. If you betray me, I can forgive you. If you betray Biafra, your sins are unpardonable. That's how it is. And they will never, ever find their way back into I P O B. They can be mid-marrying, asking for coming together, groups, let's come together. I know those who are behind all that rubbish. They can never come to I P O B anymore. They, they put Romani, they, 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 they put Romani on some... Alright, uh, I P O B. Are you a member of I P O B? No, you can't see. And that's number, number six.
I quit us. Tata go join Ugo. Tata go join, you stand the coast, you are in the...
Let's, let's clarify this one, so, he just joined I P O B today. Let him ask maybe this one, but please, very brief, one minute.
Tata go join, it's like Biafra, Biafra. From Boston.
My name is Mark Oko. I'm from... And the greatest force, mountain pressure in all part of the world to make sure that Biafra is liberated from the shadow of the Sioux. It, as a result of the I P O B pressure and attitudes, freedom is granted to Biafra. I am asking, these other groups of factions, shouting at the, shouting at Biafra in the morning, and shouting the Sioux in night. This group, through their activities, after their opportunity to work in the Biafra government, as civil servants, not politicians, because I know political positions will be one of election. That's my first question. My second question, please. Uh, I want to direct this to individuals, am I permitted? Okay. The question I want to ask to the individuals is directed to our dear reverends, fathers and pastors here. When there was a fight that claimed the head of country priests, the Nigerian, uh, Christian body rose to the top of the mountain of... The order that I think of this, I learned, there has been great, great cases. I want to ask our priests and pastors here, who are the head of... For this, but who are they, I mean, I... This is good, to show what I'm talking about. Have to detect a little serious construction, pay it off.
Thank you. Master, are you gonna answer this one? Give a, 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 one minute, just a second.
I P O B. Uh, thank you, my brother, for that wonderful question. Um, unfortunately, I never have all the answer that you expect. Because we also, many of us, we are also asking questions. What is the church prayer? Do we fold our hands and let disciple reduce us to a once church that once existed? And it's very possible. To be honest with you, like I said, I don't have, we may not have yes and no answer to that. But the good news is that we are waking up to the reality.
Yes.
Every blessed day, we are waking up to the rea- reality. And like my brother priest said, many of us are breaking the silence. And so far, the one is an instrument to our salvation is I P O B and people are coming to embrace it.
Alright, who is number seven? Number seven. Number seven. Question number eight. You say, are you right with me? I P O B. I P O B. I P O B. If it is not I P O B, it is not I P O B. A lot of people are forming different bodies, to create what I P O B is trying to do. I P O B is trying to liberate our people. A lot of people are forming different groups and they're putting the name of our leader in their agenda, but they are not from our leader. Our leader is here today with all due respect. I want him to answer this question because I take these questions a lot. If it is not I P O B. Somebody goes and form another group and they are trying to lure our people to come as supporters because they've seen that I P O B is the biggest group. They need supporters. They sweet talk our people and they want to divert their attention to their group for money-making purpose. If your co-founder, are you allowed to go off and join another group? I P O B. I P O B. Our leader is here. Um, if this were to be a custom church gathering, I would accuse him of having come through the back and may perhaps caution him on what to say. Come on there and... What he said is very critical. Instead of you, there was a young man here that rose up and spoke about the youth wing of I P O B. If you have any credible idea that can move Biafra forward, bring you to I P O B, we promote it.
Simple.
How can you be fighting for new Nigerian movement? I say, boy, I measure the world Biafra, you say, no, you can't measure it. I want to work with me, you should know me, you might.
Are they demented?
People go to fun groups, more than I know, fun people. Yeah, my son, put there at, uh, Saturday night. They might not come from there at Saturday night. Uh, why don't you form a group, in hand, in hand, and then, ah, ah, oh, they can, I know, you know. People know, knows it, I hope you know, why not come, I go too. You have said about over there. And then they start asking us, why don't you bother? What is that thing, that is the thing that can be done inside there, you know me? Why not the outside? And, tell it to them, and they wonder, why must we insist? We are insisting because we are under oath. We can never compromise, we can never sell out. Sioux cannot get to us, no matter how many they kill, we continue marching until they come. But they say, but I want to form my own group, I want to form my own group, come and join us, face it, join them. And they are busy pecking lies, feeding you with nonsense. Udu Nage. Udu Nage, I have not come to America, boy, I can have, but I do not ask me questions they cannot have, they cannot ask. But tomorrow is I can bust you, rubbish. Well, they, and my American citizen, most of them carry American passports. So they have more than I do, they can not be found. If people think that Biafra is going to be like, they know that useless, God forsaken African country, then you're mistaken. Everything will be done on merit. Everything on merit. That is why we say that all of us, by nothing misaffairs, you, the people of Biafra, will decide who governs you when Biafra comes. And who tells you, oh, go on, I'm going, uh, oh, go as you can. Why? And some of you hide your prejudice under these stupid worship groups. I give a, how many are there? Four, five, six people, no rally in Biafra land. They have not got, when they come to protest, they say, we're stressing that, they say, we're just a joke. They probably make a simple, uh, nature something that. When you are fighting for a better Nigeria, I am fighting for a better Biafra. Give to Sisam, what belongs to Sisam, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Alright, do I have enough online here?
All right, dear.
Alright, brother.
All right, dear. Um, people are in challenge, and it's always with you, people are in the way.
Yes, right.
But when you sit there, and I'm going, and I'm just doing. And people, when you sit there, challenge, you go, you know, but anyway, it's all immunity, and they are going to do. And my like, the more, he is like, what do you want, Malobi? But who can not even, uh, enjoy it yet? One of them, who, who watch it, Biafra now, and my, but I remember this thing. Missed it, and I remember, I wrote it, don't worry, I will, I will, I will. But you book, rewrite, don't worry, yes, yeah, what they read, Biafra has. He have challenge to people. Guru told me, that if you know, I do, I mean, next to me, no check. And the, if you look, but I'm that's a, oh, my, I need to do the other, I get away. But he have challenge to people, in a watching, tiny line, between taking his glory and giving to people. So that's all they get, and I'm saying.
Yes, sir. I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to listen. And I want to verify my impression, and I see my best friend, you're saying, and I will never make a mistake.
There's good people, you have.
Hold on, hold on. I'll be, I'll be. Listen, listen. Hold on, listen. And, and, and you speak, hold on, you speak. You will speak, don't worry, you will, you speak, won't settle, you will, you will, not, that's what, that's what, please. Hold on, I said, you speak. IPOB. Please, 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 who found them Nigerian? Who found them Nigerian? Who found that these two? You don't know? Hello, do you know why I emphasize this? Do you know why I emphasize? Do you know why I emphasize this? Is because some of you have, uh, gathered, uh, want an Africanized and a very primitive impression. I keep saying this all the time, there are many ways to mask your prejudice. And disguise it, people will not know. More for the same, I wish it's me, drink that thing on my son. If it's not you or your son, it's a real win. I don't think that any, I pray for each and every one of you here, several times a day. But when I start mentioning all of you here, gathered. Before I started this movement, I had to travel to Jerusalem. Unback covenant. Have I accorded anything and not given glory to him?
No.
Huh?
No.
I like you very much, did you listen to me? I ask you to go and listen to my adorment prayer in Malaysia. If you don't change that fact that will never change in your life. I pray to the most high in heaven. And when I pray, when I say, let thy will be done, I say, Kyo Lu, I am immortal. One day I will die, but no world remains forever. And that is why you will come. When people say, my lord, and myself, well, it is too much idiots. You call him Lord Luka and you're fine, because all they are chanting. When people say, no, the God is my lord, you stop your face, now, in the first place, yeah. Ah, no, no, I'm not ready.
We go through what we went through. Who else have gone through what we went through?
I will see. I will see.
We go through what we went through, and none of us, I'm not telling you to go through what we went through.
I will see.
And none of us, if you're going to go through what you want.
No, John, no, John.
So he desires whatever, what's not where we want to respect. You know, you know why it's so difficult, because it is housing, many of us, a man is like the president. And of course, you have to take the credit, he desires.
Alright, alright, IPOB. IPOB. Alright, you don't need to come out of your line to come to the front. Say wherever you are, but you have nothing to say, I'll bring the microphone to you. I don't like people behind you here to crowd the place. Everyone wants to talk, who has not my level? Stay right there. Mo, I want, I want you, I want you, I want you in war, for my job, I want you, I want you, Peters, Ocono. Oh, Mo, Mo, I command, Mo, I command, I command, the, I be a set up, do, during the war. And I had that set up till the end of the war. I fought Olidja Preacher, he threw my legs down, all grown, broken to pieces. I was, it was broken as Olidja broke, Preacher, where we went to defend on the Olidja Preacher. And I came back from, I, I came back from the war, from, it's a, it's a, it's a, oh, I had a, a blow, uh, MLF, MLF, uh, MLF, uh, by, uh, MLF, uh, station, you know, because of, of two, Ochubu asked for to do that. Not only that, not only that, oh, I want, I want, I want, I want, I want, from, 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 from outside, from outside. I went, I went through hell, I went through hell, my question now, my question now, Mo. My question now, Mo, I have seen all these things happen. I have given my life of Biafra, and I thought of Biafra, and Biafra is in my, in my blood, is in my life. Ochubu is the great, great friend, Mo, I want, I want, I want, and I ask, I'm going to make a mistake. Oh, who, who did not agree, read them my book, he has way better, well, I, 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 okay, nobody is stronger than Ochubu and me. But my question is this, and if this, that question for what mistake, um, to, um, I don't know, now. And that's one question, um, for, everybody may make here now, now understand what's going on. That question is this, why are we, look, our friend and brother, it's present with omission. Why are we talking about, why are we talking about his friend? How, how can we, we must be his friend? Where, where, that's the question, that's the question. My, my brother, I'm like, to Biafra, we love her to his friend. And IPOB, uh, people, the world is watching, they are complaining, they are complaining. They say that they are being unruly, if you are calling, they are not, isn't it? If you're calling this slide, you see their comments, they are disappointed. They say they are being unruly, go online, that's what I'm discussing. Please, uh, now, um, you fought the war, you said. I don't want to argue with you on that. But every genuine Biafra veteran I've met all over the world, they want us to proceed and get Biafra. You said, I thought you said I was trying to take the glory of Yabo, or who's his head? So I was a bit confused, but let me clarify something. Does anybody know what this is in our land? Have you seen this before?
Yes.
No, I've never seen it. I've never seen it.
No, you don't do, you don't, you hear me, no, don't do that. Man, I tell you, don't do that, no matter what, don't do that.
I want to answer this question. I have not seen, answered this question. And you know, I have not seen, I believe, that's not it for that. It's one that, come out, it's a, it's a, it's a. Sit down, it's okay. Come, you say, we are pleased, I get with you. Sit down, wherever you are, in your phone, I mean, I want to, sit down, wherever you are, please. Sit down, wherever you are, please. There is money for people to have, yes, I'm a person for it. Go sit down, please, leave it alone, go sit down. Go on and sit down, please. I, I, only praise, I don't want anybody standing above here, please, first, go ahead, someone must come here. Some of us love, uh, Biafra, it happens even clearly to you. Hello, I don't want anybody standing up on to there, just mind standing, please, nobody around this side, I beg of you. So I can answer his question, so we can learn from it. Now you could start it by saying, I took the glory of Elohim. When this microphone was into him to substantiate some very illegal he couldn't, he jumped to something else. Mentioning Israel. I don't know where in Africa, I don't want to have a specialist. Come here, I want to. Who is still on the road? Who is from Africa? Is anybody from Uwev here? From Uwev? What is, I don't, no, I don't. When they start, can you tell me the first thing they say? They call for the camera. Number one. That's the one else. That thing you see in where, is thrown out from the and that is this. And I need to understand something else, please. When I was, I took pictures with some elders. Emblazoned across their chest since the start of day. Are you listening to me? Oh, Muekere means the children of Israel, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a Bible? Is there a Bible? Is that a Bible?
Yes.
Is that a, is that a, we can, we can play?
Yes. Yes.
There was one, when I was in Nigeria, I saw something, the man said, if you remember those that grew up in we were told the story of what was said, that peoples have no history. They have no relatives. They come from nowhere. And some, some of us thought that very much. They have, almost such a if you have not met, the old, old people are great. Every cousin, every who, every family, is what you practice in your village. Now, if you are not related to Israel, how come you circumcise your relationship with Israel exactly this year? Why is it that, if I am here, if I am boy, is he not here? For seven years, is he not here? How about you, Umele? If what, if what you want, I never you know, I don't want to come across as being too harsh. But not everybody from the war. Some saw it from far. For two, I pray, we have battles, I have they have a sound of that, but they are not there to confront anything. And we also I must say, I have never come across a thing like that. Made like this before, never. And I'm very proud, it's before the war. Because and also can never rise. And also can never rise. He was not, I said to drink the war, nothing like every set of drinking war. Money. There was a team, oh, my, yeah. Two hundred, two hundred and five, bro. There was a other set of, there was a bad set of, there was a reset of, a reset of, no other set of.